I would like to call the meeting to order at this time. I would ask that we stand for our invocation. Follow our invocation, we will have prayer. Dear Creator, we thank you for this Spirit of day. We thank you for life, for health, and for strength. We thank you for another opportunity to serve. But we ask that you will please continue to be with all of mankind, through the good and through the bad, through the suffering, through the battles, and even through the illnesses that's plaguing us throughout this world. We need your precious Spirit. We need for you to bear us up, that we will always do what is right. And when we fail to do what is right, we ask that you forgive us. Pick us up, put us back on the path, that we may continue to serve all the citizens of this great city and throughout the world, that we all would do what we're called to do. Through the battles that the countries are experiencing now, we ask that your presence be with those, that you will bring peace throughout this nation and throughout this world, because that's something that only you can do. So we ask that you come within this meeting today, that you clean up our hearts and our minds, that we can hear from you, that we would do what is best for all of those who are walking this earth, and even for the ones who are to come. We place our needs and our desires aside, so that your will shall be done. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, as we prepare to go into our agenda, I would please ask that you will look and see that we have two addendums to be added to our agenda. The first one would be our appearance before council for presentation of a proclamation. The second would be an executive session item. But also, there's been a request that we have the addition of the recognition of award that we have received. If there's no objection to these three items, they will be added to our agenda. Hearing none, that resolution shall be moved. And because we have got some changes here, be patient with me as I seek through the various things we have up here today. So first, we will have approval of our minutes from July 22 for my regular meeting. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, like sign. Let it be known that that minutes have passed. First, we have appearance before council. It's Mr. Greg Robinson. He is the CEO of Florence County Economic Development Partnership. He's here to make an introduction to the council. Greg, please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and distinguished members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be with you today. I first wanted to introduce myself, and I came with me someone that is no stranger to the city, and that's Stephanie Godge, who is our assistant director. And I'm asked, Stephanie, to kind of hand out a little bit of information for you, for us to discuss. First and foremost, I've come literally less than 30 days. So it is, I wanted to make sure that on this first entry into the 100 days of trying to learn about Florence County and all of our municipalities, especially for the city of Florence, I wanted to present myself in front of you and kind of have you, have the ability to ask me any questions, of course. I wanted to thank you for coming to my welcome function, both of you. And that meant a lot. The hospitality of Florence has been second to none. And as we bring prospects into our area, I know that will continue. In front of you, you have just a little bit of a 90-day plan. And of course, we take that out over 100 days. But most importantly, it's about a work plan. And how are we going to work together? And how are we going to make sure that we transition in a proper manner for prospect development? When we look at the recruitment of industry, both international and nationally-based companies, it always comes back to product availability. It comes back to utilities, it comes back to workforce and pro-business environment. And so if we fire on all those cylinders, then we will see that we will be successful in Florence and in Florence County. Part of the work plan is literally to kind of understand exactly what we have as far as redundancy of water, sewer, gas, electricity, our power availability, and what can we do to make it redundant and more available to all prospects? And that is prospects that are going to generate light assembly manufacturing jobs, or the way that advanced materials, including back office and other types of components that we think that are so important when we're talking about regional headquarters. If you look at the 2022 and beyond on page four, you will see a kind of a strategy of seven things. And one of those you guys are already doing, and that is about brand and image, and the importance of gateway enhancement, and the importance of making sure that we put the best foot forward when we're talking to prospects. These individuals come from around the world, and they're going to be looking at our community and sizing us up against 15, 20 additional communities. And we have a limited window to make that first impression. First impressions are everything. I want to thank your team from your utilities and your administration. We've already had opportunities to meet. They have been fantastic with our boots on the ground. I was telling Stephanie, I'm real pleased with the activity level that we're seeing right now. And I think that's very important for the citizens to understand is it's not easy when we have to have this product availability. And you guys were partners with us. And so on pages five and six, I wanted to show you some of the industrial park east improvements. These are recent pictures, so that you can see the improvements that we're making, because it's about having the product ready to go to market. And that's very critical. So when we come back to you, and you understand that we're trying to develop this product from both of product availability in buildings, but also in sites. And I think that's very important for you to share with your constituents, because it's all about creating jobs, and not just jobs that are for job sake. Quality manufacturing jobs that pay you well above our average and have insurance benefits, because those are all very important. From a marketing perspective, we're going to continue to show the world. We recently had our international project managers downtown Florence last week. What an excellent opportunity for us to showcase the international aspects of what we offer in our state, and specifically in Florence County, to those foreign offices. Very important for us to have them come and visit. And of course, it's nice, and the drawing card can be a bucky's. But the point is, is that we are truly showcasing what we have to offer. And so I've also ended with some of the upcoming events that we kind of close out this year. It's going to be a fast year. I wanted to kind of open up the floor for any questions that you may have of me. I look forward to working with each of you individually in your districts, but also the city and the county as a whole, as we overall raise the standard of living, and most importantly, improve the quality of life of all of Florence County. Thank you.
Well, Greg, first of all, I want to say it's nice to be with you again, and it was an honor to meet you. And I'm looking forward to the things you're going to do. I did have the honor of being with you at our partnership meeting. And I'll have to acknowledge that your relationship with Joe King is impressive, because we know the things that Joe's done. But based on your track record, I'm looking forward to the projects you are working on and the ones that you will bring forward. So thank you for coming here to Florence County. We're looking forward to working with you. At this time, we'll recognize Councilman J. Bailey.
Welcome again. It was, as the mayor said, it was great getting a chance to visit with you at the reception. I'm impressed with the dynamic can-do attitude that you present and bring to the table. And you were preceded a few months ago, it was about four or five months ago. Stephanie came and gave us a great update. So what you're presenting us today is a nice follow-up to that and enhancement on it, and we appreciate it. I do want to comment on, I think the timing is appropriate, that you're talking about bringing the international approach to try to bring industry in and grow it, and the tie-in to downtown Florence and to water. And last month, we just named our regional water plant after our former mayor, Frank Willis, who was so instrumental in having served in NESA, he hadn't served on the Florence County Economic Development Board. And so he brought, 20-some-odd years ago, this vision that the city of Florence can no longer be just a small insular self, and that we have to be a driver for economic development for the whole, not only the county, but the region, and help literally transform our downtown, as well as our facilities that we have availability in water and all. And so the tie-in of you coming in today and talking about it, and echoing back to last month's recognition that we had of all that he had done, is just, I guess, an affirmation of the last 20 years' work that the city of Florence has done, and particularly proud of our downtown and what we have and what is to come, and what we have on our agenda for what is to come, to help grow it. And I'm imagining, and you can comment on this, the impact that that has, because I think our citizens need to understand that the downtown is great for those of us who live here in Florence, but it's also can be a showcase for you and others as you try to recruit into Florence. So if you don't mind commenting on that.
I don't mind at all. And you've picked up on something that's very important from the quality of life. And once you get past the utility delivery, you know, the check of the box, and you get past the site works check of the box, then it becomes about how do I bring in management? How do I make sure that management is satisfied? How do I make sure that spousal satisfaction is part of this overall equation? Back in Orangeburg County, where I came from, Senator John Matthews, who was a tremendous leader in the Senate, worked with Senator Lethem and very closely, talked about cathedral thinking, and laying that foundation for us to understand that we would never see the final brick or the steeple finished. We know that we're improving the quality each and every year, so that the next generation and the generation after that truly have the advantages. And that's why you're doing what you do. And so going back to the important aspects of it, you really have such a limited window when we're dealing with international and nationally-based projects. And so making sure that we put our best face on the visit, and making sure that they leave with a lasting impression. And I think you've really done an excellent job. It's one of the reasons that I was excited about even coming to Florence County and to Florence City, is because I see that approach. I see the pro-business minds that you have. I'm engaged, because you want growth. You're excited about opportunity, and you want to make a difference. And I think not every county is that way. So I commend you for what you're doing. I thank the citizens for supporting you and your efforts. But we are going to be pulling in the same direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schofield.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg, I just want to tell you thank you for stepping up to the plate and doing this. I mean, I couldn't be more excited about having you on this team, that we're going to be really moving forward. When I met you that night out there, it fired me up. You've got fire in your belly, just like I do, and you are all gas, no brakes. And I think that's exactly what the city of Florence needs and Florence County needs. And to have that quality of life and business-life mindset together combined is exactly what I envision for generations to come. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any other councilmen? Greg?
Thank you.
Greg, you have a swarm around you. I went out there, but I couldn't stay too long, so I apologize for trying to meet you out there. But for the citizens of Florence who are on TV, tell us a little bit about your family. We know your resume, but you know, we want to welcome you and your family.
Well, thank you. And I look forward to relocating. I'm actually in that process right now. I actually have two nephews and one brother, and my father, who was actually at the event with you guys. So it was a pleasure for him to be there. And Jeanne and I both enjoyed being among everyone at the party and learning about the area. I can't say enough about the board, Rocky Pierce, the partnership, the importance of the partnerships, by allowing us to kind of settle in comfortably during a time of learning about where to go. Even though the market's cooling a little bit, I'm under contract on my house, and I will be relocating as quickly as possible. I do not have children, so I'm looking forward to hitting the ground running with the job as fast as I can, so that'll speed things up a little bit. But I am an avid football player or football fan, and so I look forward to learning a little bit more about the friends and family that are around here for football.
We won't make you tell everybody which team you pull for.
Notice I didn't say anything.
Yeah, I'm saying that.
Is there any comment from council? If not, Greg, we just thank you. You're already here, you've hit the ground running. So just know that as a city, we're here to do our part to make the whole Florence County better.
Thank you. I really look forward to it, and we're going to be hitting the ground running right now. And as we have appointments back at the office, I know you all have a full agenda. Thank you very much. And I do have my contact information for you guys. So please, if anyone has any questions or thoughts after, I welcome the call.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Stephanie. And at this time, next on our agenda, we will have a proclamation. And the proclamation, I will read it. We do have family members here to receive the proclamation. And the city of Florence proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Mother Eunia Dees will celebrate 100 blessed years of life on August night, which is tomorrow, and it still holds on to God's unchanging hand. She is a living testimony of her two favorite song. "God is a Good God," and "Prayer Changes Things." She is still praising God with the patting of her feet and the clapping of her hands. She is an inspired inspiration and blessing to all of her family, church family and friends. And whereas Ms. Dees was married to the late Thomas Dees for almost 71 years, together they raised 11 children. Did y'all hear that? 11 children, all of whom are blessed to celebrate with her, all of her children, along with 38 grandchildren and a host of great and great-great-grandsons. To God be the glory. And whereas Mother Dees attributes her lifelong life to three main things. Y'all better listen close. Honoring her parents from a child and teaching her children to honor their parents. Secondly, living a life as a Christian, loving people, and treating everyone with respect. Thirdly, living a life of prayer and believing in the power of prayer. And whereas Mother Dees has been significantly changed throughout her lifetime to include desegregation. She's lived through changes, and these are the changes she lived through. Desegregation, economic development in Florence County, and going from sharecropping and living in a farmhouse to owning and living in her own home. Now therefore, I, Teresa Myers Irving, Mayor of the city of Florence of South Carolina, do hereby recognize Mother Eunia Dees' 100th birthday celebration and congratulating her on reaching this remarkable milestone. I'm going to ask that her children come forward.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and also the council. We also like to show you a picture of my mother. This is, she was 91.
Mrs. Dees, I will give you the speech to that. If we can get you, I want you to make sure you get that.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. I got excited. Okay. Well, again, I appreciate you, Madam Mayor, and also the council of men and women. This is my baby sister, Juanita, and this is my oldest sister, Edna. And we are from a family of eleven children. It was all raised here in Florence. And we just had a family reunion on this past weekend, and we was blessed to have our mother with us. And so we appreciate the mayor and this council here presenting her with this proclamation. And certainly, we blessed our mother. And again, she has two sons over eight years old, and they're all living and healthy. And my baby brother is 58. So we raised from 80, wait, 2 to 58. And so God has been good to us. We lost my father about 12 years ago, he was 94. And just from history, the place where Walmart is now is where we used to farm. Matter of fact, the driveway to go into Walmarts was the driveway to our family, our farmhouse. And so if you can go back 20, 30 years, you can remember the place. That's where we used to live. And so now she's owning her own house, paid for, got good. And so she went from a farmhouse to owning her own house. So we thank the Lord for her life, and certainly, she has been an inspiration to us, and thank God for that. And also, can I?
Yes, I'm with you. I'm going to take y'all before the audience, and then after, if your sister wants to speak, I will let y'all come back so y'all can speak. But I want you to have her picture front and center.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'm just excited.
I want you to use as a reason to be excited.
This was, she was 91 at this picture here. She's 100, well, she'd be 100 tomorrow, and she don't look much different than she is now. But we want to share with you, we want to make sure that you can talk some.
God bless you.
I'm just excited. I want you to use as a reason to be excited.
This was, she was 91 at this picture here. She's 100, well, she'd be 100 tomorrow, and she don't look much different than she is now. But we want to share with you, we want to make sure that you can talk some.
God bless you.
And so at this time, I do want to present you this proclamation. And I have to smile, because at least as long as I've known you, I did not know your mother was 100 years old. And she's all this baby, good thing in the morning, all. So on behalf of city council and myself, and also the city of Florence, we present you this proclamation on behalf of your mother for 100 years of life and just to stay in here. That's a blessing, because many don't get to live that long. Some only live half the time. But they have children that are still alive at 100. That's a blessing. So I know God is with her, and she does things right, because y'all are standing here today. And I know you, so I see the promise. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. If any of y'all want to say anything, you're welcome to go forward. We just thank you for giving us this opportunity to share and honor our mother. And she has been an inspiration to us, and God has really blessed our family. So we really thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
We're very thankful to receive this presentation. On behalf of our dear mother, Eunia Dees, we are thankful, and we are blessed. And to God be all the glory.
Amen. And to the Dees family again, congratulations. And to Ms. Dees, a early happy birthday, for tomorrow will be your birthday. So happy birthday to you, and thank you for being a part of Florence. We appreciate it. Now, at this time, we have addition to our agenda. I'm going to recognize ProChamp, J. Bailey, and also Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore to present the Best in PD Award that was received.
First, let me just, before we head down, we have the Morning News here with us today, taking down notes. And there was a marvelous event that was held out at the airport where Best of PD winners and favorites were all recognized out there. And it was a really, really well-done event. And Chris, if you would please, on behalf of city council, thank Matt and yourself and all of the Morning News staff for having done such a tremendous job in putting that event on. While I was there, I was asked to be the receiver of awards, two significant awards, Best of the PD awards. One being for the award winner as the Florence After Five, as the best outdoor event. And the other one, where Pat and I are so near and dear to our hearts, the best community festival, of course, the South Carolina Pecan Music and Food Festival. And we had to do a little bit of clarity and make sure it was pronounced correctly. Pecan. But what I'd like to do is, Pat and I will come down, and we'll ask Randy Ostrom, our city manager, to come receive these and make sure that they end up in the downtown development office, where they can be properly displayed.
And again, to correct, I'm going to attempt it. Pecan? When it was first started, and I was a little bit, Pecan, what was the idea? And it was a pecan.
We've had pecan.
Pecan.
Today, he didn't know it, we were just giving awards, but he has on our t-shirt.
And so you want to stand up and show us a t-shirt? This is last year's t-shirt from the Pecan Festival.
I am the first to decide of the founder, Ms. Pat Gibson-Haymore, so whatever she says it is, I receive it.
So the first one is for Florence After Five, and we want to hand you that as well for best in-outdoor event. And then Pat and I would both like to hand you the one for the Pecan Festival. It is an exciting one, and November 5, note it on your calendars. Coming up, it's going to be a great year coming up. But thank you so much, and thank you, Pat. Oh, and our headline, Sister Sledge, will be our headline of this year. We are a family, of course.
And I do want to acknowledge and thank Councilwoman Moore for her dedication, and also the ProChamp for working with her, because this festival now is really recognized as the state festival. So that's an honor. So once again, thank you for founding, thank you for helping her on the years, but also to her husband, thank you for being there with her during this process. And I'm sure the whole other city, thank you. Do any of the councilmembers care to comment? Recognizes Councilman Bright.
I'd just say that, you know, without vision, we don't have things. And Councilwoman, you're transitioning off, but you've had great vision for our city, and we appreciate that. And without teamwork, I always say teamwork makes the dream work. Without downtown development, George Bay, they know the members of council, it would never happen. But it always starts with a vision and a dream. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other comments? If not, once again, thank you to both the council members who went forward to represent the city, to receive and present the award. We thank you. And also, again, Councilwoman Moore, I echo what Councilman Bright said. But one of the things, I know you may not be sitting on this podium, but I know you're always a community servant and leader. So I thank you for all that you have done and all that you're going to do, because you will always be a force out there. And I would like to recognize you at this time, any comments that you care to make.
Oh, I like to, I've been telling people, I said, even though I may not be up here on this podium anymore, but my voice may get even louder. So be prepared, Randy.
So thank you, appreciate that. Congratulations again to everyone for their awards. Next, we have on our agenda, we will be recognizing the resolution, and I would have to entertain a motion. We have resolution number 2022, that's 25. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
So we have a motion in the second to recognize a resolution, to recognize National Health Care Week. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. And we do have representative who will be receiving this proclamation, and it's resolution number 2022, that's 25. it's resolution number twenty-two, that's twenty-five, and it states, whereas, community health centers provide affordable, quality health care to millions of people across our nation, state, and region. And whereas, each year, over four-hundred-and-thirty thousand individuals receive patient-focused, comprehensive health care services, including preventative, primary care, and dental care, case management, behavioral health services, maternal and childcare, and enabling services from community-based facilities across the Panmetto State. And whereas, in addition to contributing to improving health in our communities, these facilities help lower the cost of health care by reducing inappropriate emergency room and hospital visits or utilizations. And whereas, community health centers continue to provide an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, including geography, income, insurance status. And whereas, during National Health Center Week, we celebrate Hope Health and their vital roles in making the Florence community a better place, and recognize their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all of those responsible for their continuous success and growth. Now, therefore, be resolved, the City Council of the City of Florence does hereby proclaim August the eighth through the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as National Health Center Week. Throughout the city, and encourage all residents of Florence to recognize the importance of contributions of the health care centers in safeguarding the health and improving the quality of life for the residents of the Panmetto State. Be resolved this eighth day of August twenty-twenty-two, and thereby seal per, I'll see the attorney, uh, clerk, and myself, the mayor. At this time, I'm gonna ask the representatives from Hope Health to please come forward for the presentation.
Bailey? Come on. Come on. I'm just temporary.
The entire, the, somebody was not there.
Oh, I'll be this year, so we can. And I'll give you an opportunity to speak, but I want to say to you, in terms, you are important, you replace old folks like me, but I would kind of, yeah, so I'm gonna ask that y'all please come forward and have me to speak.
Well, thank you for the proclamation, and thank you for the opportunity. On behalf of Carl Humphries, our CEO, and the whole Hope Health Organization, six-hundred-and-fifty employees in five counties, serving sixty thousand patients. We, we appreciate the recognition. Community health centers have been in business for over fifty years. There's fourteen-hundred-and-fifty health centers across the United States, and they save you and I, the taxpayer, some thirty billion dollars in treating chronic disease and diverting people from the emergency room for non-emergency care. So, we play a vital role. We couldn't do it without great community partners and, uh, without the support of the city. So, thank you, thank you for having us today. Appreciate it.
At this time, is there any comments from Chair Recognizers, Councilman Braddock?
I just want to say, uh, for me and my family, as a proud patient of Hope Health, it has been a, a huge blessing to have that in our, in our town. I work in a nonprofit, and so, um, up until about twelve months ago, I didn't have any insurance through my, through my organization. And so, having a resource where it was scalable and affordable, uh, was a huge blessing to me and my family. So, thank you for the service you've provided, me and others in my same situation.
Chair Recognizers, Councilwoman Pat Gibson-Haymore?
And I'm also a proud patient of Hope Health. So, yes, thank you very much for all that you guys do, and you help so many people in our area, in the PD. Thank you.
And I'm also a patient at Hope Health, and also, I do have the honor of serving on the board for a couple of years now. And also, I would like to acknowledge that when Hope Health originally came, I think the first branch was like on Evans, when it started out, from Evans, then transferring over to Cherokee, and then the opportunity came, that was a grant available, to have it rebuilt. And I would probably like to say that with our previous mayor, and also, House Representative Chair, like, Erin Zander, and also, Carl Humphries and myself, did have the opportunity to go to Washington to speak with Congressman McCloud, to ask him to have those funds available so that Hope Health could build here on Irving Street. And with his support and help, that happened. And Hope Health has been flourishing, there's so many locations since then. And I would love to state that having community centers are important, because a big factor when it comes to your emergency room with a lot of waiting, sometime when people do not have that primary care or preventative care, they go to the emergency room. And so, Hope Health has alleviated a lot of that burden off of both our large institution, McCloud, and also MUC. And I can love to state that they have a good working relationship with both organizations. So, Hope Health, thank you for all that you are doing, and also, thank you for the things I know that y'all are gonna do in the future. You make our city a healthier place by you being here, as well as being in other areas too. So, thank you, and it's an honor. I know I will say that we believe in you, and we believe in the Health Care Week, so thank you for being here today. And if that concludes, no other comments from that point, we'll move forward with our agenda. We have ordinance in positions, and the first one is actually bill number twenty-two, that's nineteen, which is for a second reading.
Move to the room.
Right, any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor of bill number twenty-two, nineteen, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed, like, sign. Let it reflect that bill number twenty-two, that's nineteen, has passed the second reading. Next, we have bill number twenty-two, dash twenty-one for a second reading. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed, like, sign. Let it reflect that bill number twenty-two, that's nineteen, has passed the second reading. Next, we have bill number twenty-two, dash twenty-one for a second reading. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed, like, sign. Let it reflect that bill number twenty-two, that's twenty-one, has passed second reading. Now, we will move forward with introduction of ordinance. The first one is bill number twenty-two, that's twenty-three for first reading. It's an ordinance to amend the budget for the city of Florence, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning July the first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending June the third, twenty-twenty-three. We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second so we can hear from, so we have a second? So, we have a motion, it's second, so we can hear from Mr. Yocum. Thank you, Mr. Yocum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council. You have before you this afternoon on your agenda, two consecutive ordinances amending this year's budget. The first one currently before you is what we refer to as the early purchases ordinance. These are items that were removed from, these were items that department heads requested in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, that had to be removed from the budget in order to make the budget balance. However, there are suffi, there will be sufficient savings from the previous fiscal year in order to fund these purchases in the current year budget.
Any discussion?
I make a motion that we send this one over to the financial review committee for further review.
So, you amended, you amended the first motion that we're taking?
Correct.
Alright, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Alright, so, we have a, um, motion to amend so that this, bill number twenty-two, that's twenty-three, will be sent to the financial committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor to have this proceed to the financial committee, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed, like, sign. Let it reflect that bill number twenty-two, that's twenty-three, will be referred to our financial committee. Next, we have bill number twenty-two, that's twenty-four for first reading. Do we have a motion?
Second.
So, we have a motion, it's second, we'll hear from Mr. Yocum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I previously said, if this is the second of two ordinances, this ordinance is the one that staff refers to as the carry-forward ordinance. These are numerous items that were funded in last year's budget, FY twenty-one, twenty-two, that for various reasons, you're all familiar with the supply chain issues and all the related issues surrounding that, could not be procured in last year's budget, so we are just carrying those items forward to the current year budget.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Make a motion that we send this to the financial committee as well.
Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, that bill number twenty-two, dash twenty-four, be referred to the financial committee. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed, like, sign. Let it reflect that bill number twenty-two, dash twenty-four, will be referred to the financial committee. Next, we have bill number, and thank you, Mr. Yocum.
Thank you.
Next, we have bill number twenty-two, that's twenty-five for a first reading, and it's an ordinance to rezone from PDD to AC a portion of the parcel located on Second Loop Road, and identify it as Florence County tax map parcel number nine zero zero three zero, that's zero two, that's zero zero seven. Do we have a motion? So, we can hear from Mr. Dudley.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, we'll hear, hear from Mr. Dudley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. My, um, I'm gonna have to ask the technical gurus in the back room to see if they can unfreeze the computer here. It's, it's frozen up, and I'll go ahead and begin the presentation. Um, hopefully, they can get it sorted out here. Um, but this is, um, property located, uh, along Second Loop. As you recall, this was, um, came to council before, but was withdrawn. At that time, it was, um, associated with an apartment complex. Um, this time, it's simply the property owner bringing this back, um, in an attempt to kind of clean up the, the zoning on the lot. Um, the issue is, is that in, in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, there was an ordinance passed that, uh, rezoned a, the rear third of this parcel, uh, to planned development district. And as you know, planned development districts are, uh, typically create their own development standards, um, and, and they're passed through, uh, planning commission, and then on through city council. Uh, The Grove is, is one of the more recent examples of, of a planned development district. And, um, but a, at this time, um, there is no guidance in the ordinance that was adopted back in nineteen eighty-nine. So, there's no, uh, guidance for development of this rear portion of the lot. Um, we, we did take this, uh, to the planning commission. Um, it is a four-acre lot, the, the front portion is zoned activity center, and the rear third of it, uh, is zoned the planned development district. Um, also, the, um, adjacent lot to the north, which is Logan Plaza, um, you know, the front of that is, is developed, um, as a little strip mall, professional office area, and the rear portion has a daycare on it. That rear portion is also associated with this nineteen eighty-nine rezoning, um, and was on planned development as well. And at planning commission, um, they did vote unanimously eight to zero to deny the rezoning, and, um, but they did provide a suggestion or recommendation that the property owner bring it back before planning commission, um, as a PDD amendment. Um, some of the concerns were, uh, the protection of the adjacent residential, single-family to the rear side of this property, and potentially, uh, to bring it back as a PDD amendment, uh, that would allow some commercial development, but protect those, those properties as well.
Alright.
We've got maps.
Okay. Again.
And here, this is, this is the property in question, along Second Loop. Uh, and you can see it's currently vacant, um, and the portion here, um, the parcel is highlighted in red. Uh, as you can see, the front portion is zoned activity center, but that, um, portion that is green to the, to the back is zoned planned development. And that concludes staff's report.
At this time, we do have a participant signed up. Do you desire to speak? At this time, we recognize Ms. Mary Jane Weir.
And I will be brief, but, um, we do appreciate the, um, the considerations, the local neighborhoods in the whole rezoning process, because we, you know, realized that if it was rezoned, anything pretty much could be built there. And by keeping it as it is, will, will, you know, protect us, and we do appreciate that. I mean, there was some, quite a bit of discussion. We appreciate the planning committee and their comments and, and their acknowledgement that, that we don't want to impact citizens that are living there by changing something.
Thank you. At this time, the chair recognized Pro Tem. Following the Pro Tem, we recognize Councilwoman McCall. Following Councilwoman McCall, we recognize Councilman Braddock.
Jerry, just a quick question. So, procedurally, if we agree with the planning commission today and vote no, that would still allow them to fol, the owner to follow up with the planning commission as the recommendation to consider the amendment to the, the planning, uh, document?
Absolutely, and the planning staff would be glad to help the property owner through that process.
And just, and this clip, so that means that when we motion, we are motion to accept the recommendation of the commission. And when you accept that, you re, reset that denial with the referral back. So, that motion, if you so choose, would be to receive their recommendation. So, Councilwoman McCall?
Yeah, that was my question, so, I thought we, we were to vote no, but do we have to wait a year to come back, or is it, it's automatic defer?
It, it would be a different request coming before planning commission, therefore, they would not have to wait the year, um, to rezon.
Okay. Councilman Braddock?
So, Jerry, how, how does it, how does it happen that half of, was it one parcel before in eighty-nine, or was it two separate parcels that were later did together?
It, it appears that it was one parcel in eighty-nine, based on, uh, I, uh, we did some tracking of deeds and properties, um, back as, as far as, you know, we could track it. And in nineteen eighty-nine, when it got rezoned, it was one singular parcel, but the back third was applied to this planned development district. And that there was-
Looks like it was consistent with a couple of other lots.
It, it was to the, to the, I guess, the, the northwest of this parcel, the, the lots behind, or the, the lots associated with Logan Plaza, were also zoned this PDD as well. Um, but documentation just wasn't there to support any guidance for development there. Um, we checked with the county, uh, we checked, um, all of our files, the ordinance files, and it just didn't turn up.
Are there things that we have in place now to protect property owners like Mary Jane from something like that happening again in the future where it splits the zoning of one, one parcel? Or could, could it happen again like that?
Well, it, it, we don't like to split zone parcels, but, um, but ultimately, if, if areas of a parcel are defined, you know, through meets and bounds and such, you could split zone a parcel.
Is there any, is there any other questions from the council? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gibson-Haymore.
Your main reason for not wanting it rezoned is to make sure that something the community does not need or want would be, would be placed there in the future?
Correct.
If that concludes the discussion, we will entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of planning commission and defer it back, uh, yeah, for need changes.
Second.
So, we have a motion to receive the recommendations of the planning commission, which is to deny the present, um, request, and to have them return the plans for the profit. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
In opposed, like, sign. Let the record reflect that this bill has been received and voted upon as recommended by the commission.
Mayor, just to keep the record straight, you all had a motion on the table to accept the, um, request for zoning. You now basically amended that motion to, um, vote to deny the present request and refer it back as recommended by the planning commission. Probably to be safe, you should now go back and vote on the original, um, motion as amended, um, and treat that motion made by the councilman as a motion to amend the first motion.
So-
So, now you will be voting on a motion to-
Amend.
-deny the zoning request as presently before council, and to accept the recommendation of, uh, the planning commission.
So, vote yes means we're denying?
That is correct.
So, 'cause now we, y'all understand, you're saying we're going back now to the first amendment, because we had to vote to hear from Mr. Dudley. Okay, so we had that to hear, and during the process of that, then we had a motion, which was actually amended. So, we voted to receive that amendment. Okay, now, we are gonna go back and vote to the first one, where we are going to actually vote that one down, that we're not, we vote yes in order to receive what they say.
No, amend. What, what we're doing is, we're treating, you had a motion on the table. No other motion could be made, other than a motion to amend the motion on the table. the zoning request as made and to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission. So you've now voted affirmatively on that. So now, that original motion has been amended. So now, you're back to the original motion as amended. So the motion before you now, what you're voting on, is a motion to deny the zoning as requested and to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. So a vote yes for this motion denies the zoning as requested and sends it back for further consideration by Planning Commission under PDD.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
So what you're saying is that we vote now, you're really voting to leave everything as is?
You're leaving the zoning as is for now, yes. You're denying the motion for rezoning, and you're also accepting the recommendation of Planning Commission to advise the homeowner, or the property owner, that if they wish to consider rezoning, they need to consider redevelopment of that PDD standards.
Basically, Jim, the bill we got on here right now, y'all, in ordinance to rezon PDD to AC, a portion of the parcel located on Second Loop Road and identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number, so we voted on that so that we could hear from that. So now, we've heard from Mr. Dudley. Then we got that amendment, which said, okay, we don't want to receive this as it is, we want to go with what has been amended. So we voted on that and we received amendment. Now we got to go back and vote on this because that amendment still was on the floor second, but we're gonna do it receiving that designation to decline and to send back to have the recommendation that came from the plan. Okay, Councilwoman Gray.
For me and the property owner, I just want to make sure that means that she does not have to wait a year.
That is correct. She does not have to wait a year, but also the zoning request is denied.
And it means that we're basically doing what the residents that live there want us to do. Okay. I just want to make sure.
So Jim, let's clarify, so everyone be on one page. So we vote now, if they vote yes, they'll be voting to receive the motion that we have, correct?
A vote yes now is the exact same, you just voted yes on it. The problem is, when you amend a motion, you have to vote yes one time to say, yes, we're gonna accept the amendment. Then you have to go back and vote on the motion as amended. So a yes vote now denies the zoning request and accepts the request that it go back for further consideration as a PDD.
And that's what we amended, so. Okay. Now you've heard the statement as amended. All those in favor signify by saying it first, if there are any other discussion, since we just, all those in favor signify by saying aye in opposed light sign. Okay, let it clearly reflect that we're voting now to go ahead, we're declining this estate, and we're receiving the recommendation from Planning that we have it referred back to them, and then they will hear from the owner of the property with advisement that came from there. That's what we just voted on. That's what we just approved. Okay. All right, next we have.
I'm sorry, y'all, I'm sorry. I said, I'm sorry, I messed up nothing.
No, no. You didn't mess it up, you just do the process. There's no messing up. You just do the process and keep it clean. That's what we got Jim for.
I have one other thing to say.
Yes, Mayor, Chair recognizes.
So is that what you wanted us to do? Because you look confused over there.
It seems like next week we'll be back here, but I guess what we're looking at is actually having the property owners submit something that would be more suitable besides this urgent and complex.
Because I saw you two looking very confused.
Let me do this. Ms. Mary Jane, can I ask you to step here so when you do speak, they can clearly hear you, and this way also we can have clarification from our attorney.
I was just concerned, that sounds like we're gonna be back here again with all our presentations and all our discussions again, but I think the proposal, it just sounds like we're gonna be back here again because they're gonna submit to do this again, but then the Planning Commission has to accept whatever they want to have, I guess, right? If they want to design something different.
The only way it comes back is if the owner of the property now submits a plan for the, I'm gonna call it, filling in all the blanks on the PDD on that back portion. That's the only way it comes back. It doesn't automatically come back. If the owner now submits what the Planning Commission suggested to, and that is a new plan filling in the zoning for the Plan Development portion of it, and that goes to Planning Commission, Planning Commission makes their recommendation on it, then it would come back to City Council. But it doesn't automatically come back. It only comes back if the owner submits something else to Planning Commission on the PDD portion of this. And not a rezoning. It's hard to explain what a Plan Development area is. A Plan Development area is acreage in which, as part of the formation of that Plan Development, they submit a detailed plan showing buffering, how the property will be used, and all of that within the PDD. In essence, the applicant for a PDD requests the zoning within that area, that back area. Doesn't mean that they get to choose it. It then goes to Planning Commission. Planning Commission looks at that request, and then it comes to City Council for final action on it. What's missing here, and we're guessing why it's missing, we think we know why it's missing, when that PDD was formed back in nineteen eighty-nine, that plan would have been part of the formation of that PDD. As many people know, in the late nineties, planning was consolidated with the county. So the city sent all of their planning records over to the county. Planning came back to the city. That consolidation was ended, and planning came back to the city in about two thousand four or five, right in that timeframe. When it came back, the records on that PDD are gone. We don't know what was within those records. What the Planning Commission has indicated is you've now got a piece of property that says it's PDD, but we don't know what the zoning within that PDD is. So what they told the owner is, if you want to do something with that back property, you need to come to us with a proposal, show them what kind of buffering you're talking about, what sort of information you're planning to do, what sort of zoning you're requesting within that PDD. Planning Commission will then take a look at that, make a recommendation to council. It will come to council for, in essence, a rewriting of, I'm gonna call it, the guts of the PDD. But if the owner doesn't put in a request, it doesn't come back. What council has done right now is not say, send it back and send it back to us. What they've said is, we're denying this zoning request, we're accepting the recommendation of Planning Commission. The only way for this request to be appropriately addressed by us is a rewrite of the PDD. If the owner doesn't submit that, it never comes back to council, and it's over. If the owner does submit that, it goes to Planning Commission and then potentially back to City Council.
So it's a solid plan that would have to be submitted of what they planned to do with it, and if it was accepted upon, and it was suitable for the houses and the families that are surrounding that, based on the PDD?
Yes.
Then it could go forward.
And to Mr. Dudley, there's guidelines for PDDs, correct?
Yes, there are. There are certain guidelines they would have to meet for submitting, yes.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or discussion? If not, next we have on our agenda is actually Bill Number twenty-two-two-six, which has, the applicant has requested to have this rezoned or withdrawn. So if there's no discussion, this item stands withdrawn from our agenda. That's Bill Number twenty-two-two-six. Next, we have Bill Number twenty-two-two-seven, which is for first reading, and it is an ordinance to annex and zone NC-six-point-one, a parcel located at two oh six East Shenandoah Lane and identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number nine zero one one three dash zero one dash zero five zero. Is there a motion?
Motion.
In a second. We have a motion in a second. We hear from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor. My head hurts a little after all that, so this isn't easy.
All right.
This one is a property located in the Spalding Heights community on Shenandoah Lane. It is the location of a single-family home. The proposed zoning is NC-six-point-one, which is in alignment with the existing use as well as the surrounding zoning, and water and sewer is available to this property, and Planning Commission did recommend unanimously to zone it NC-six-point-one.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye in opposed light sign. Please let it reflect that Bill Number twenty-two-two-seven has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number twenty-two-two-eight for first reading. It's an ordinance to annex and zone AC and OSR, the parcels located at two five zero seven West Carmelo Street and identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number zero zero one zero zero dash zero one dash zero zero two and parcels number zero zero one zero zero dash zero one dash one four seven. Do we have, this item also, staff has requested that we defer it, so if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and we'll defer this item as well. Hearing none, this item is deferred. Bill Number twenty-two-two-nine for first reading is an ordinance to annex and zone NC-six-point-one, the parcel's located at thirty-three five oh Clark Branch Road and identified as Florence County Tax Map Parcel Number zero 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 nine eight dash zero one dash zero zero two. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
We have a motion in a second. We hear from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This property is located along Clark Branch Road. It is, it's actually, and I have a better map that shows it a little later, but it's the first section of this house, of this lot that faces Hoffmeyer Road, is not part of this annexation, but it is the rear portion. There's currently a single-family home that faces Hoffmeyer, and there's a large lot associated with that. But this parcel is proposed to be brought into the city as NC-six-point-one, which would allow for single-family development. Concurrently, concurrent with the annexation proposal came to Planning Commission, the sketch plan, which would subdivide this property into twelve lots, and this has the dimensions on it that would be annexed into the city, so. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend the zoning of NC-six-point-one.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye in opposed light sign. Let it reflect, Bill Number twenty-two-two-nine has passed our first reading. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Next, we're entering into introduction of our resolution. We have Resolution Number twenty-two-two-two-two. It's a resolution to reallocate twenty-eight thousand dollars of the City of Florence twenty-twenty-dash-twenty-twenty-one CDVG Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is the CARE Act budget. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
So we have a motion in a second and a discussion. And at this point, we had this referred to our financial committee, and I would like to hear from that chair on what was their recommendation.
Our recommendation was to follow the staff's recommendation for twenty-eight thousand dollars to go to the county manager's.
Thank you, Chair, for that. You've heard the report. All those in favor of passing the resolution, please signify by saying aye in opposed light sign. Let it reflect that Resolution Number twenty-two-two has passed. Next, we will have report to council on our appointments to boards and commission, and we hear from Mr. Davis for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We currently have five boards and commissions that have vacancies or expired terms. Our first board is our Board of Construction and Maintenance, Board of Adjustments and Appeals. There are two openings, a mechanical contractor and a layperson. Both of those nominations fall to Madam Mayor. We do not have any applications for this board.
At this time, based on, we do not have any applicants. I would have to defer.
Do they meet? Do they have meetings? They meet as needed. Yes, sir.
They basically recall, if you like, appeal things through.
Correct.
So if you want to give them a little explanation so they'll be aware of what that board does, I would appreciate it.
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay. All right.
Our next board is Parks and Beautification Commission. There's one vacancy on that board. There are no applicants, but it does fall to Mayor Pro Tem Jaba.
With no applicants, I want to defer.
Thank you. Our next board is the PD Regional Airport Authority. We do have one vacancy on that board. We have applicants Tom Uier, Nathaniel Locker, Mike Miller, Robert Weir, and this appointment falls to Madam Mayor.
No objections, I would like to appoint Mr. Robert Weir. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Robert Weir, please signify by saying aye in opposed light sign. Let it reflect that Mr. Robert Weir has been appointed to the PD Regional Airport Authority. Thank you.
Our next board is Aesthetics Advisory Committee. There's one vacancy and one expired term. We do have seeking reappointment, Jory Robertson. The expired, that's the vacancy, excuse me, and then we have applicant Shalana Dees and Michael Henderson there who are looking for seat seven. And Jory Robertson, again, is seeking reappointment. Making nominations include Councilwoman Moore for seat seven, the vacancy.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Moore for appointment.
I guess, yeah, I know who it is. I'm trying to decide which one. I was trying, been playing with this for about a week now. I want to appoint Shalana Dees.
We have a motion for Mr. Shalana Dees. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of Ms. Dees, please signify by saying aye in opposed light sign.
Our next appointment falls to Madam Mayor.
I will reappoint Mr. Jory Robertson. He's requesting reappointment. That's my motion. Is there a second for Mr. Jory Robertson? So, Mr. Jory Robertson has the motion, second and a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Robertson, please signify by saying aye in opposed light sign. Please let it reflect that Mr. Jory Robertson has been reappointed to this Aesthetics Advisory Board.
Our final board is the Public Safety Citizens Review Board. We have one vacancy. Applicants include Marsden Alexander, Robbie X., David Jones, William Matthews, Jr. That appointment falls to Mayor Pro Tem Jaba.
I'll defer.
Madam Mayor, that concludes staff's review.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next, we have on our agenda is committee reports. First, we have a report from the Chair of the Business and Development Committee. Chair is recognizing. Chair is recognizing.
So the Business Development Committee met on July the 22nd. And we had a very good presentation at that time from Michael Hemingway, gave us an update, as well as Clint Moore, gave us an update at that time. And one of the, we were hoping to have heard from our airport director, but the airport director was unable to attend. And I think that she'll be coming, when is that?
August 19th.
On August the 19th, she'll be coming. So we'll be able to get an update from her as far as what's happening with the airport and how, and it ties in with the economic development report that we see from Mr. Robinson when he was here earlier, from the economic development. So it was a discussion that focused a good bit on infrastructure and where we're at with our infrastructure development and infrastructure needs that we have, whether it's stormwater, our water department as well, and the water lines, some of the aging water lines that we've got and what's needed in that. So it was just a general discussion. As I recall, there was no real recommendations that were made. It was more just an update. If any other committee members have anything else they would like to add, ask them to speak up if there's anything further. That's our report.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we will have a report from the Community Development Committee Chairperson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We met on July 28th and we did, there were no concrete things that we actually made a motion to put, make the ball running, get the ball to running. But we are continuing to discuss, of course, how we can bring the community together, how we can better our communities by unifying them, events that we possibly could come up that could bring us together as a community. But there was actually no concrete thing that we actually finished at that meeting. That's my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will have a report from the Marketing and Public Relationship Committee Chair, please.
Yeah, we had Jeff Ziegler come in through via Zoom call. Jeff is the founder of Revitalize the DIA, a community revitalization firm, specializes in equipping government entities with the skills needed to help fight apathy in their communities by fostering civic pride. That is our goal, to increase civic pride in Florence. He laid out a couple of items that we need to consider. Number one was to put the needs of our residents and business owners first. Two, promote a message of Florence keeps getting better, therefore we keep getting better. Three, to focus on relentless improvements in our community. Four, to mix any motion with our messaging. And then lastly, to, and this was really the majority of the conversation, believe it or not, was to bring hanging floral baskets to the City of Florence, which members of staff really appreciated that. So I think Randy fully intends to, he's got to do it himself, to have some hanging baskets down in downtown Florence pretty soon. But that is, that's our report.
Thank you, Chair. But I would like to add with that statement you're stating about civics, responsibility and commitment. A part of the Municipal Association Annual Meeting this year, one of the segments that they covered, you know, you were present as well, was a pledge that was given, and it was in response to civility, respect and to solution. And it did read as follows, I'm going to read that since this is something that y'all can be focused on. It said, "I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civic engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city, our town." So with that, that's a good theme, and I think we had a good meeting with that. Now, all of us who was there as representatives from the city, we took that pledge. And it was recommended that this pledge actually be utilized in the beginning of each meeting. So you might want to look at that, which can be in the seat house, if you want to actually have that as a part of how we're doing it. But thank you for that, and thank you for using what we're doing as a municipal association to help better this city. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. So at this time, we will have a report from our Financial Audit and Budget Committee Chair, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We received information regarding the status of our annual audit, and I think it's prepared, I think it's on track to be presented to us in our December meeting. In addition, we also discussed the allocation of the $28,000. That was once authorized to go to Mercy Medicine, but was reallocated to Matta House. So we've already voted on that now. We had a discussion pertaining to pay family leave and the approximate cost of, you know, cost to city to implement it here. I think we made a, we talked about it, and we think it's best that it more likely be addressed at the next budget cycle for 2023, '24. And then lastly, we received information regarding the opioid settlement that Florence is to receive approximately $2 million over the next 18 years. And it's not much information on it, but we're just, you know, trying to make sure that we got our, everything in order when those funds are to come our way. So that's all we have for our report.
Thank you.
Well, sorry, if I missed anything, Councilman Barnes and Councilman Schofield.
Just to clarify that that money is spread out over 18 years.
Over 18 years, yeah.
Does that complete your report?
Yes, and that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that report. Next, we'll, we have our Judicial Review Committee report, but that will be discussed in executive session as was laid out. At this point, that concludes all of our committee report. So at this time, I will entertain a motion that we go into executive session to hear on a personnel matter for 30-4-70A1 and also for item which to receive legal advice regarding issue that arise since our development of agenda from 30-4-70A2. And if we can have a motion to.
Motion.
Okay, and do we have a second? Do we have a second? Ladies and gentlemen, we are back from executive session, at which time there was no vote or action taken. So at this time, we proceed back to our agenda. And we were had, item first was a personnel matter. And upon that, we were actually received information or vote on from our judicial committee.
Yep. At this time, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjust the chief judge's salary consistent with other city employees for a 1% COLA and 2% merit raise effective January 2023.
A second. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, in opposed light sign. And lastly, we also received some information to, regarding to illegal advice from our council at that time, at which time there was no action taken, just legal advice. That completes our agenda for today. We are, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Stand and turn.